Well, it worked best because I. Then is.
Hey, everybody. It is just after six P M with the arrival of Commissioner Bandi. We are sufficient to have a quorum and we can begin business this evening. We're calling to order the planning commission meeting for today. Monday, December eleven, twenty twenty-three for the city of Carlton. Commissioner Amaya, Commissioner Stewart, Commissioner Bandi and Commissioner Terrell are all present. We don't need to do a fancy roll call, but that is four out of seven. And that is a quorum. I don't believe we have any proposed changes to the agenda as sent out last week. No changes to the agenda, so our first item to address this evening is the approval of the meeting minutes from November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. They are found at page three and four of the packet for this evening, which is a total of thirty-eight pages. Were there any proposed modifications? Mr. Bandi, do I trust that they meet your approval, sir?
Fine.
All right. And did I sense in those wonderful bucolic eyes a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Second.
There's a second from Commissioner Terrell, all in favor. I approved unanimously. We'll move on to our next item, which is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for anybody in the community to speak for a few moments on anything that is not listed agenda item. We have one agenda item this evening. Is there anybody in the community that would like to use this opportunity for practice of rhetoric? Nobody here in person and nobody in Zoom land, so we will move on to our one and only topic this evening, which is a continuation of the subdivision file S U B twenty twenty-three dash zero two concerning the property at seven five one South Second Street. As this is commencing a quasi judicial hearing, I will once again repeat. The hearing's disclosure statement and we'll get underway. This is formally opening the public hearing for S U B twenty twenty-three dash zero two. All persons testifying shall be deemed parties to the application and must provide their name and full mailing address if they wish to be notified of decision continuances, appeals, or other procedural actions required by the code. The city zoning code specifies applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings affect or in the city staff report. Public testimony should be listed to those criteria and findings of fact or to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes applies to apply to the proposed land use action. Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body and parties to the hearing an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes appeal to the land use board or to seek damages in circuit court due to its condition of approval. Before the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may ask the council for an opportunity to present additional relevant evidence or testimony that is within the scope of the hearing. The hearing's body shall grant the request by scheduling a date to finish the hearing, known as a continuance, to a time and date certain, or by leaving the record open for additional evidence or testimony. We're generally going to follow the proceeding as follows. Required statements, staff report, applicant's presentation, those in favor of the application, those opposed, neutral testimony, rebuttal by the applicant, requests for a continuance to leave the record open, close of the hearing, close of the record, deliberations and decision. Again, this is a subdivision twenty twenty-three dash zero two. We are a quasi judicial land use capacity this evening. This time we'll call for any commissioners to declare conflicts of interest, abstentions, bias, or indications of any ex parte conflict. I have none. Mr. Maya.
I have none.
Mr. Terrell.
None.
None. And Mr. Bandi, Commissioner Bandi.
I I have none.
None. Excellent. We are doing.
Anthony.
Oh, I do see Commissioner Annette Fernandez Madrid.
The dial up here is rather slow from Mexico. I am acquainted with the applicant, so I must recuse myself. I will, however, be listening in.
Excellent. We're all jealous of your latitude.
Pretty nice, but it's windy.
Literal latitude. Not the figurative kind. We will proceed at this time to call for any objections to our jurisdiction to hear and decide on this matter this evening. There's nobody here with any pickets and nobody in Zoom land. Speak up now. Forever hold your peace. No questions regarding our jurisdiction. We'll proceed to staff for the staff report on this matter. Dwight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Scott White, a contract planner for the city of Carlton. I have a PowerPoint presentation as part of the oral staff report here. Call that up here and make sure those who are attending virtually are able to see as well. Okay, just some background. Hopefully, everybody can see this. First slide just identifies background and summary of where we are today. This is a thirty-nine lot residential subdivision. Fourteen of the thirty-nine lots are for an attached intended for attached type of duplex unit. And twenty-five of the thirty-nine are intended for detached. Now, we had originally scheduled a public hearing for November thirteenth. And what happened on November thirteenth is that the applicant requested a continuance prior to opening the hearing. And so we have yet to open the hearing for public testimony. With that request for continuance, there is a partial waiver of the state mandated one hundred and twenty day time period for making a decision. And so we have just kind of a for the period of time between thirteenth until today is what we have for that. So I want to just mention some new exhibits that we have for the record. First is the staff report, or I should say a memorandum that is dated December fourth. And it's in response to two of the exhibits that we received from the applicant. Exhibit three B to the staff report, that's the applicant's traffic engineer, Todd Mobley. I that dated November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three. And then another exhibit is exhibit B four, and that is the applicant's revised plan set. It's a total of twelve twelve sheets prepared by the applicant civil engineer, A K S Engineering and Forestry. Today, you received two more exhibits that was forwarded this morning to you. And those exhibits, although what you received probably did not have the exhibit numbers to them as are shown in this slide, is a memorandum by the applicant's legal representative dated on Friday of December eighth. Sherman Sherman Johnny and Hoyt. And then also a supplemental memorandum from the applicant's traffic engineer that also dated December eighth, twenty twenty-three. So again, you receive those just this this morning. Some more information from the applicant. Next slide, please. So more on on background here, we have we have several findings in the staff report that you received for the November thirteenth meeting date. The staff report was dated November sixth and what we had in that report were several findings that that found the applicant's proposal meeting various development code standards. But there were two key development standards mentioned in that report that we had made findings that the applicant's plans do not meet. And these were under the street section of the city development code and got the citation up there. And the the two standards, C, that speaks to alignment that all streets other than minor streets or cul-de-sacs be in alignment with existing streets by continuation of street center of staggering the T sort of intersection is is not recommended. So that was particularly a concern with the earlier proposal that the applicant had submitted. There was a street stub of Taylor Street to the western boundary of the of the subject property. But that was too high. It wasn't in the southwestern corner of the site and didn't meet the minimum spacing requirements as required by by the state specifically O D. And D was another item there, and that's a future extension of streets. And that makes specific reference to the the future streets plan that's found in the Carlton Transportation Systems Plan, or T S B for short. And so we we had some findings as far as the plan not consistent with that as well. Next slide, please. So what you received as a packet a week ago has now a new layout. So what I'm going to do with the next three slides here is show you what the the city's future streets plan. This is just a portion of that as the title reads up there. It's figure five dash four of the Carlton T S B. And there's also there a legend that kind of shows what the coloration of streets means there. And then to the right, we have one of three alignment options, street alignment options that is described in what would be what B four of the applicant's packet. And so it's, yeah, it 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 shows there alignment option one or figure one of the memo. I've got some numbers that are shown there. Number one there was shown circled is is the distance there. A hundred and twelve feet of distance is kind of hard to read. But that's the distance between what what is a approved. What I want to say, the extension of Taylor street within the J R Meadows three subdivision there to the far right. And and what the applicant would propose under this alignment option along the southern boundary of of the site there. Number two there, this shows alignment feasibility with the existing Taylor Street. That would be the existing Taylor Street on the west side of Highway forty-seven. And then three just indicates that plan details are not provided, and I'll provide more information on that note. Next slide, please. So same left-hand side there again is the city T S B future streets plan kind of again showing also there we added where the project site is shown relative to this this plan. And here's option two or figure four of the applicant's memo. And we have now this time, number one there shows a street aligned to the street center lines of J R Meadows three, so that that's good. We also have alignment feasibility with existing Taylor Street, what would be on the the west side where but but stub at least to the southern former sub, I can say it. South S B S, what is it? It's the Southern Pacific Railroad. But number three shows there that there are no planned details. We're not given what the lot layout is for this for the street alignment. Next slide, please. So again, the future streets plan and circled there is the indication that there is a connection that's planned. And in this one, this is option three, figure six. And we have a street alignment there as shown to the street center lines of J R Meadows three to to the what would be the east. We have no connection, though, that is shown with existing Taylor Street there off to the to the west. And here we do have planned details that we received. So the twelve sheets that you received as part of your commission packet are specific to this option three figure six alignment. Next slide, please. So want to talk a little bit about the standard in D. This in the staff memo, we explain that we find that this is a a standard that is clear and objective. And a standard that does not support option three, the last alignment that you you saw on the slide there. Want to just kind of go over these bullets. Standard D contains the word shall in the beginning part of the development code. There are some word meanings and shall is listed among those word meanings since in that section is shown there to the bullet. Also, standard D specifically refers to the future street plan, the Carlton T S B and and no other plan or it doesn't just generally speak to the Carlton comprehensive plan or T S B. And then we have standard and D also refers to the network of streets and connections to state county roads there. So we we have that as as far as specificity and and clarity. And so this is one of those things that we want to make sure that the commission is aware of as we have a challenge tonight to the standard not being there and objective. I'll also note that we are we are doing some code updates and this standard we reviewed with a consultant. This is not subject to any changes that we have underway in a proposal that will come forward in a few months to the planning commission. Next slide, please. We also in the staff memo talked a little bit about the applicant's site. So this is a photo. This is a Google Earth photo there at the corner of Taylor Street and Highway forty-seven. It's it's just what the south southwest portion of the applicant's site. And we've made some findings of feasibility that options one and two of the applicant's memo illustrate street center line, the boundaries. That there's no known sensitive areas, typically wetlands and no inventory historic or cultural resources to this particular area. We don't have a situation where the right railroad right of way is is raised like we have in a number of areas throughout the state. Power poles, those are that's something that can be moved in the future. And what the report refers to is the ability for the applicant to to place a quarter of of the street improvement right of way to the land of the south that has is fairly large and has the ability to develop in in the future. So there is that as well where the applicant does not need to do a a full street. They can do a three-quarter street improvement. Next slide, please. So we want to also identify the need for plan map amendment. If if with in in review of option three, again, that option where no connection to Taylor through the applicant's site is is provided. There's been some challenge to that as well with respect to the comprehensive plan and where it speaks to refinement of the future streets plan and some flexibility in alignments. Staff maintains that this does not encompass removal of a planned connection. The applicant's information that you received this morning identifies some other areas of the city and some of those areas have been developed. This is what's shown to the right. There's a little bit larger area. It's still a portion of the the T S B plan, the future streets plan. But it it some areas have been approved for development, some have been developed a little bit there, but there's still some land that remains undeveloped. And the the full extent there of of Taylor is is shown east to west. One of the things with a future street plan, and again, we're we're distinguishing this particular case as unique because it is proposing a break, a break in the chain of not providing the connection. And and one of the things with a map amendment, it goes beyond just the review of one particular property through a limited land use type of application. It it looks at 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 more things than just the capacity of a road area vicinity of the project site. We would look and evaluate system-wide impacts and and look to other things like emergency vehicle response time if that connection is lost. Next slide, please. Needed housing. That's one of those things that we hear a lot of about, and there are new provisions in Oregon revised statutes. The applicant has provided reference to those. One of the things looking at the the statutes is the fact that it still references a comprehensive plan and consistency with that plan. And I've underlined a portion of of that. There's a local government shall approve an application for permit authorization of other approval necessary for a subdivision, all that kind of stuff. That is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The future streets plan is part of the comprehensive plan is the T S B is part of the comprehensive plan and and it's and it's clear as to its connection there. Next. So in part, we have from the applicant's additional supplemental data. They have identified some safety concerns, and if you had had the opportunity to review the memo, you'll see some red lines and some yellow lines, and the applicant can explain that that further. This is referencing some some spillback that has potential there according to the applicant. One of the things we mentioned, the staff is not a an expert on this particular topic. I am not a traffic engineer and Gordon's not a traffic engineer, but yes. So spillback is vehicles spillback. So that that would.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah. So it's queuing, the stacking of vehicles. So what we don't have is, no, I'm not not experts on it, but we we can make general comments that there isn't any methodology, circumstances, assumptions, frequency of occurrence. None of that is provided. Connection of Taylor there is not proposed as part of the subdivision. We make that clear that the the stub to the site, the stub of the street is what we want, but not proposed as a connection. And one of the things, too, is this a number of access restrictions and street design options that can be explored in the future. Having the street stub to the to the what would be the western boundary of the subject property, it provides connectivity options in the future. And that's a very important thing that staff wants to stress. If you approve option three with no connection, it's it's basically acquiring properties that are shown in that option if the city wants that connection in the future. Next slide, please. Okay, so there are some written comments that we received. You received the comments from Joseph Emerson. That's exhibit C one of the staff report that was November sixth. I think we included it again in the staff memorandum for this hearing. And then also Anita White was a a person submitted some comments as well, and that was received on the hearing date of November thirteenth. And again, we have included that again, just for reference as part of the staff materials. Generally, concerns raised about existing conditions of Second Street north of the subject property and concerns about heavy traffic along Second Street and and some other items here. The there will be opportunity tonight, as the chair mentioned, for a public testimony. But we didn't want to, just in light of that testimony, identify what the applicant has provided. This is items here from sheet P seven of the packet that the commission received. So there are some improvements and just that red box there shows what the improvements of the cross-section detail right behind or right below the the red box illustrating the extent of off-site improvements. Staff will be available for answering some some questions on on this as far as and certainly the applicant as far as the off-street parking, off-street parking, off off-street street off-site street improvements, if I can say it, but but anyways, we are mostly wanting the commission to ensure that the the access remains available. Next, next slide, please. So we need additional information for options one and two. We've made that clear in the staff memo. This is something that we have codified in the development code. All of the language there is simply a portion of the things that we require applicants to provide when they submit an application to the city. It allows the commission, too, to understand what the what the improvements are. So we're just providing this slide to make it clear for the record that the plans that we received are are insufficient. This plan here is option two, which is the staff preferred option, but we just don't have the details. Next slide, please. Staff recommendation. I'm down to two slides here, almost done. First is to open the hearing and accept public testimony after the applicant's testimony and presentation. And then deliberate in response to the testimony, discuss the the alignment options that have been identified. If the commission supports alignments, the options one and two, staff recommends indicating a preference. Staff is also recommending that the applicant given an opportunity to request a continuance. We kind of get into those memo a little bit on the timing elements to that the next available planning commission or regularly. available planning commission or regularly scheduled planning commission meeting is January eighth. And there would need to be a, a plan submittal illustrating the details of an option there, option one or two to staff by December twenty sixth. If the hearing is continued to January eighth, next. The last slide, motions, we, the last page of the memo identifies the motions there. We're not recommending denial. Although motion A there does mention denying the application. What we have, the most detailed plan available is option three, the plan that staff is unable to find and support. Motion, option B there would be to continue the hearing, the date time certain, next regularly scheduled meeting is January eighth. Within this, what our own code, Carlton Development Code describes as a sixty day timeframe to which the commission is charged with making a decision. And then we have options C and D are pretty much the same there. Under options C and D, the commission would have to make findings though. So it would be to approve. But it would be a matter of making findings and we do have conditions of approval shown as part of the memo. This concludes the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I think we're going to have a bucket of questions, but I think procedurally we move forward the applicant for the time being. Unless the applicant is desirous of requesting a continuance. I think we move forward with the applicant's report and presentation at this time. Is that you, Mr. Hoyt? Are you here on behalf of the applicant today?
I, I am here on behalf of the applicant, if it works. Our approach today is to have me make a few introductory comments. Pass the presentation to AKS Engineering, who will talk about the substantive provisions of the application. I'll make a couple of transitory or transitionary comments, introducing Todd Mobley, who will talk about some of the safety concerns that are not addressed in the staff report or any discussions you just heard, which have been driving the applicant's approach because safety is paramount for the applicant. He'll talk about that and then I'll conclude things if that works for the commission. And so we do not want a continuance at this stage. We think it's a good time to present information to the commission to see what the commission has to say, seek guidance from the commission. What we, we bring today is hopefully a subdivision that will be an asset to the city of Carlton long into the future. And we want that to be a safe and productive asset for the city. And frankly, there are just some almost irreconcilable conflicts here, but I think we need the, the guidance from the commission on. And without a presentation, I don't think the commission has the information that needs to do that. So that's our hope tonight is to give you some information, give you some background and give you a chance to tell us what you think your city ought to look like in the future. We're proposing what we think to be the two safest and best options. We understand why staff has concerns with those, but you sitting as the planning commission are the ones that get to tell us who's right. And so we want to give you a chance to do that, if that works.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Mark Hoyt, Sherman Sherman Johnny and Hoyt, six nine three Chameca Street Northeast Salem, Oregon, nine seven three oh one. Just want to confirm as we go forward, I sent an email this morning to Mr. White that the staff reports and decisions for JR Meadows, one, two, and three are included in the record. Is that, I just want to confirm that fact. Is that right, Mr. White?
We didn't have time to forward that to the commission. Staff was in a, in a meeting at the time that you submitted that. So the commission has not received any further information than the exhibits that were received on Friday, December eighth.
We'd ask that those documents be included in the record before it's closed. We'd like a vote this evening though, we'll have to address that at the end of the evening if we can get there. With that, I just want to kind of introduce you, you'll see in a little bit more detail in just a minute that the, the application team here involves my firm, AKS Engineering, who's had several talented professionals working on this. And perhaps most significantly, Matt and Jeanette Nardoni, who are the applicants or the owners of the applicant entity. They live out near Abbey Road Farms, have been in the Carlton area for some time now and have very much enjoyed the area and have come to cherish and enjoy it. In bringing this application forward, they both have experience in land development and they want to be good citizens and present a project that will do good things for the city of Carlton. And that, as I think you will see as we talk about this a little bit, has driven the analysis and the presentation that you've, you've received. Based on the staff report, I think you can tell for the most part, this is a fairly straightforward subdivision application. It's fourteen attached dwellings, twenty-five detached dwellings. It's in an MX zone, which is appropriately resoned for that kind of proposal. It's needed housing, which is a legislative priority, which means it has to be judged only by clear and objective standards. The infrastructure is available. There maybe need to be some conditions to make sure there's capacity in the sewer line or the sewer system. As has been addressed with some other projects, but public facilities are available to the project. There's no real impediment to the project with the exception of the extension of Taylor Street, East Taylor Street. And we certainly understand staff's position. I mean, staff is confronted with a codes provision that says, hey, when you're doing a development, you're supposed to try and build what is shown in the TSB. And staff has been adamant about that position and we have understood that and we have tried to work with them to get there. And in fact, what's brought to you today is in part a byproduct of what staff pushed us to do, which was take an even closer look at safety in relation to the project. One thing that needs to be kept in mind, you can see it in the graphic that's on your screen now. What we're talking about tonight are stubs to the edge of this project. This project above the abandoned railroad spur that may eventually become a bike path or some kind of community path. It's a controversial political topic in Yandell County right now. But there's no abutting streets to which this project will directly connect. So anything that is done here will abut the railroad spur and won't be extended across that until such time in the future as that area is developed. So keep in mind when we're talking about extensions and things here, there's not going to be any immediate connections directly to the west of this project. So having talked with staff, we looked at it and said, okay, you want, you want the Taylor Street connection to go through? We see that in the TSB, we're looking at that and we had no issue with that in the project. Until we started to dig into the engineering. And with so many things, the devil's in the details. And as we started to dig into that, what you see is the Taylor Street connection where it is reflected on the, the future street plan is in the southern portion of the corner of highway forty-seven as it starts to turn to the left as you enter town from the south. It's not in the middle of that curve, it's at the beginning. Because of its location, the visibility from West Taylor Street is terrible looking to the north because the street goes away from you to your left and goes back behind bushes. So it's very difficult to see southbound traffic approaching West Taylor Street. And no matter how you configure the connection of Taylor Street as reflected in the TSB, you cannot come up with a safe alignment. And one of the most kind of basic ways you can understand that is that the city's own design standards can't be met. The city of Carlton's Public Works Design Standards provide that intersection should be at a ninety degree angle. And in no event should they be less than seventy-five degrees. And no matter how you connect East Taylor Street, whether it's the option one, where it's at the southern boundary of the property or it's the option two, which is a staff preferred alternative, the intersection of either be it second street or East Taylor Street extended out to highway forty-seven, does not meet the city's own design standards. So in effect, the staff preferred option that staff is advocating for today in an effort to defend their code, which we totally understand, asks the applicant to submit a design that if the city's design standards are applied, can't be built. And so you can see the conundrum that the applicant is in, as we looked into the options and talked with staff, safety was an issue and we wanted to be sure that things were safe. And so we started digging into what has happened in the area and what's happened around. And what you will see and what Mr. Mobley will highlight in some detail is that in the decisions that have developed JR Meadows one, JR Meadows two, and JR Meadows three, the future street plan has not been followed. There is one point of connection that is consistent between the future street plan and the existing or the, the approved developments. And that's the connection of Seventh Street at Maine, where there is adequate land for the center lines for the new Seventh Street to match the center line of the old Seventh Street north of Main Street. And then it moves off the property line in an alignment not as reflected in the TSB, not as reflected in the future street plan as it moves south. And a similar alignment cannot be achieved at East Taylor Street because you can't align the center lines and you saw that in some of the graphics that were displayed during the staff report. When second street comes down, even if you take the staff preferred option two, the center lines do not directly align and you have an angle of intersection that is below the acceptable level set forth by the city's design standards. So then we looked at JR Meadows two, we looked at JR Meadows three, and in all of those projects, roads shown in the future street plan, part of the transportation system plan that staff has in its staff report indicated are mandatory and must be placed as designated in the future street plan are either eliminated or relocated. And all those eliminated and relocated connections, none of them involved a plan amendment or a map amendment as staff contends is necessary here. So if the standard is clear and objective, one would expect that it was clearly and objectively applied and it was followed. Well, it has not been. And so we believe that what that does is suggest that the commission has in this instance, just as it did in the three prior instances where approved variations from the future street plan, the authority and ability to not only modify but eliminate future street connections. And so as we, we saw that flexibility built into those decisions, we saw that flexibility recognized and exercised by the planning commission. So we saw the application of that subjective ability to modify that standard applied. So we started looking at how do we best design a street system that will service the city of Carlton? And that led us to look at the transportation system plan, which says in it specifically that flexibility is intended, that the future street plan is not meant to be a fixed in place standard, but it's supposed to be one that is flexible and responds to conditions as they exist. And as you can see on the screen in front of you, the existing approval for East Taylor Street to the east in JR Meadows number three is north of the southern property line. But if you look at the future, the future street plan that was reflected several times in the staff report, east Taylor Street in the future street plan is on the southern boundary of the property and in fact straddles it. So it's already been relocated, reflecting that the, the information, the street plan is not fixed in stone. There is the flexibility to move it because it's already been done. So with that in mind, we looked at what happens if we don't connect to highway forty-seven and you saw the Google Maps aerial. Where the highway begins to turn left as you come into town, you've got West Taylor Street on the left. You've got Arthur Street going to the right and you've got the highway going off to the left. What that allowed us to do is look at moving all of the traffic movements into this project and all those projects to the east off of the state highway onto Arthur Street. Any other connection would in effect require that the some streets be closed in order to accommodate it. The original design, the one that we put together in response to staff's kind of request and insistence on compliance with the, the future street plan, showed East Taylor Street going straight across the project as reflected by its point of intersection from JR Meadows three and terminating at the railroad spur. That location allowed it to be curved south in a way that would allow a perpendicular intersection to the curve of the highway at a better vision point. But either West Taylor Street would have to be closed or West Taylor Street would have to be realigned to make that workable and Arthur Street would have to be closed. So that alignment required two streets be closed and we didn't want to close streets because people don't like it when you close their streets. And not only would people not like it, it's actually a less safe alternative. So we looked at the standard that says in the transportation system plan that flexibility is intended so long as you provide sufficient connectivity. And there's connectivity at second street, there's connectivity at third street, there's connectivity at East Wilson, at East Wilson and at East Taylor at the eastern boundary. And how do we know that that provides adequate safety? Well, the answer is that that's what this project will have until such time as the railroad spur is developed and additional connections are done. There haven't been any objections to safety standards or access standards by any of the first responders or any comments from other agencies. So you've got, and you'll see some photographs or some depictions and you'll see some commentary from Mr. Mobley in a minute that will reflect the extensive street system east of this that provides adequate circulation throughout the city. And you'll also see a map that shows that below Taylor Street, there is an open area between the UGB and Taylor Street where if another east-west connector is needed at that point in time, south of this project as part of the development of open lands where there are not previous, there's, there aren't curves in the highway that cause problems. An east-west connector can be added and put in place. So that's what resulted in the plan that's in front of you and that shows East Taylor Street not going through. And we do have there, you will see a bike access to allow access to that railroad spur. And if that spur is ultimately developed as a bikeway, one of the things that we look at is that the fewer street crossings of a bike path, the better. And this result eliminates one of those. And not only that eliminates one of those in an area where traffic's coming into town, decelerating and it'd be a very difficult and dangerous potential location. So our analysis showed that the standard here is not clear and objective because it's been modified. If it's clear and objective, it's two plus two is four. But in this instance, two plus two was five, it was six, two plus two was zero in some circumstances because connections were eliminated. So the approvals in JR Meadows one, two, and three all reflected the flexibility that we believe is baked into the transportation system plan to say, yes, you're supposed to build these connections, but only when they make sense for the future of the city. And we believe that when you look at the safety factors that Mr. Mobley will discuss in a minute, this is the best alternative. These, I'll turn it in front of you, which is the third alternative in Mr. Mobley's memorandum. The second alternative that we believe to be the, the best, safest alternative is the straight extension of Taylor Street across the project to its western boundary that allows for the turning of the connection across the spur to allow for a perpendicular intersection with the highway as required by the city's design standard. So those are the two designs that we believe to be the safest. We understand staff, staff's concerns, we understand the language they're looking at. But we believe that there's a very well-established pattern in the decisions to the east that show that the future street plan is not, does not dictate specific locations, but is aspirational in terms of what kind of connection is being provided. And that either of those designs will provide the adequate connectivity and that design on the screen in front of you is the safest, best overall design to implement. And with that, I'll turn it over to AKS to do just a little bit of kind of detailed discussion of the technical aspects of the project. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. This is Sean Vermilia. Can everyone hear me okay?
That's correct. Yes, we can.
Great. I'm Sean Vermilia with AKS, one two nine six five Southwest Herman Road, Suite one hundred, Twelton, Oregon, nine seven zero six two. I'm just going to breeze through this introduction because I think Mark covered a lot of it pretty eloquently there. But thank you all for being here tonight. Appreciate your time and your willingness to talk with us about this project. I'll start by introducing the project team. You already heard from Mark, our applicant and property owner is Max and Jeanette Nardoni. Joining me as well tonight from AKS are Chris Goodell, land use planner, and Monty Hurley, civil engineer. Also on the call and who you'll be hearing from shortly is Todd Mobley with Lancaster Mobley, our transportation engineer. So this is our site, it's about four point eight seven acres, seven fifty-one South Second Street. It's at the end of Second Street, which currently dead ends on the site. Zoned MX or mixed density residential. Think we have an aerial here, yeah. So this is an aerial of the site, which we already looked at a little bit, but you can see the railroad right away there to the west of the site. JR Meadows three would be to the east of the site, which is currently vacant on this aerial. And you can see the highway as well coming in there to the, to Uh, to the, to the west, to the left there in yellow. As you can see, the sites, uh, currently improved with, uh, dwellings and accessory structures, but overall is mostly vacant. So the highlights of this project, um, it's thirty-nine lots of needed housing, uh, twenty-nine or twenty-five detached lots and fourteen attached lots. Uh, street connectivity is planned as Mark discussed in great detail, um. The street connections will be, uh, Second Street and South Third Street to the north. Uh, East Wilson Street to the east, uh, to connect with J R Meadows three and to the west, uh, stubbed at the west boundary along that railroad. With the intention of future connection. Um, East Taylor Street will also connect to the east into J R Meadows three there. As you can see, those yellow lines kind of depict. Uh, the yellow arrows rather depict where the streets will connect. Um, and then this project will also be completing east or I'm sorry, South Third Street. Uh, which is planned to be improved to a three-quarter degree as part of J R Meadows three. So it'll just complete the construction of that street. And stub it at the, uh, south property line so that when the site to the south, um, eventually. Improves and develops, uh, that street can be extended. And then as Mark mentioned, there's also a pedestrian bicycle pathway connector in the southwest corner of the site. Um, for pedestrian and bicycle circulation. Uh, in terms of utilities, uh, underground utilities are planned for this project, including water infrastructure, which is planned to tie into J R Meadows three. And create a looped system. This is a more specific diagram of the pedestrian bicycle circulation. So a full array of sidewalks are planned in front of all new houses. Um, those are the pink lines and arrows there on this diagram. Those are sidewalks, um. So sidewalks will connect along all, along ha- along all houses and major streets, um. As well as again, that, uh, that pedestrian bicycle connector to the southwest, it's a green arrow here. Uh, bike lanes are also planned along East Wilson Street, uh, those two yellow lines, uh. Along, along the street there, on either side of the street, as well as on the, uh, west side of. South Third Street, which is again, the, the part of third that's planned to be completed as part of this project. Of course, the, the other bike lane on Third Street will be built as part of J R Meadows three, so. Full suite of bike lanes as is required on, uh, collector's streets. In terms of needed housing, um. Again, Mark touched on a little bit, but you know, the state of Oregon has made it clear that needed housing is all housing and this project has both. Detached and attached lots, um, and complies with goal ten of, uh, envisioned Carlton. Uh, the city's comprehensive plan. Uh, for providing housing for current and future residents. Uh, and in summary. Just highlighting some of the project benefits, like I said, needed housing, um, fully improved multimodal transportation network. And street connectivity to in all directions, uh, emphasizing safety and connectivity. Um, in addition to all the standard, uh, landscaping, uh. Landscape strips, um, you have it. So, uh, with that, I'll turn it back to Mark and Todd.
Thank you, Sean. Uh, I'm gonna turn it over pretty quickly to Todd Mobley of Lancaster Mobley Engineering. Mr. Mobley was the professional that we leaned on as we started digging into the project. To see what could be safely and appropriately done here because our instructions from the applicant were. I want to build something that's a safe, long-term asset for the city of Carlton. Uh, so we asked Mr. Mobley to analyze what's available and what the options were given what had been previously approved. To the east, which is was noted is not consistent with the future street plan. So, Mr. Mobley.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Todd Mobley with Lancaster Mobley. Uh, for the record, our address is three, two, one, southwest, Fourth Avenue, Suite four hundred and Portland, nine, seven, two, zero, four. So I'll go through some of these slides to talk about the, some of the specific safety concerns in the context of the. Potential intersection with East Taylor and forty-seven, but also the larger street system. A lot of this is a review of what's in. Our two recent memos, November twenty-first and, um, December eighth that are also in the record. Next slide, Sean. So the, this kind of illustrates the. The, the street plan and adjacent J R Meadows, one, two and three and the site and the street connections. Um, as we've talked about, Ford implements the. Future street plan in the Carlton T S P. Um, the streets are extended to this site boundaries for future continuation, um, to properties that are inside the urban growth boundary. And it includes the completes of the third street improvements that are on the west boundary of J R Meadows three and the east boundary of our site. So here's some photos at the potential future intersection here of East Taylor and Highway forty-seven. Um, just for orientation, the upper left there is, is looking north and you can see that Arthur Street comes off at a flat angle there. If you're northbound on the highway, uh, the upper right is looking in the opposite direction, looking toward the south if you're at the intersection. And then the lower left is looking toward the east where potentially a street connection could come through there. And then towards the west where that existing leg of West Taylor intersects the highway. So these are a few of the key safety concerns that we identified in our analysis. On the left there, it just illustrates the sight line. From that existing intersection of West Taylor, it's on the inside of the curve. Um, there's not a lot of right away on the highway there and a lot of that vegetation really restricts site distance. So we're, we're well under the. Um, site distance requirements at that intersection for site distance. Um, on the right-hand side, kind of illustrates the speed zone transition and we talk about this in our memo as well, but the. You come into a posted speed zone of thirty miles per hour, about four hundred feet south of where the intersection will be. Um, just in watching operations in the field, a lot of those travel speeds as you get to the West Taylor intersection are. Quite a bit higher than the thirty mile per hour. Um, speed zone there as people start to slow down as they come into town. So that speed zone transition, we feel. Kind of exacerbates some of these safety issues at that intersection. So this is street alternative one, that's we identify in the memo. It's kind of the strict implementation of the future street plan that's shown in the T S P with Taylor Street at the south property line. Um, it comes in at a skewed intersection with Highway forty-seven, which doesn't meet the city of Carlton's, um, design standards. Or the standards in ODOT's highway design manual either. Uh, we noted the poor site distance on the west leg of the intersection. Um, the intersection of Second Street as it comes down to East Taylor there. Um, could be problematic if there's queuing on Taylor Street. That's where we identify the potential for. Traffic queues to back up into the highway if somebody were trying to enter East Taylor and then make a immediate left to go north on Second Street. Also requires removal of, um, a tree line along the south edge of the property. So this shows alternative two. Also in, uh, in our memo. Some of those same issues, um, are still in place on West Taylor, the other side of the street intersection there. The street comes in a little bit flatter, but it's still at a, at a skew angle that doesn't meet, um, design standards for the city or for ODOT. It, it does remedy a few of those potential queuing is situated, queuing issues rather at Second and Taylor. But I, the greater concern really is the safety of the highway intersection. It's a little higher in traffic volume. So this just kind of looks at those two alternatives, one and two, and what those skew angles are. You can see there on the left. Um, the strict implementation of the, of the future street plan and alignment one has, has the biggest skew angle. And then alignment two is a little bit flatter, but still doesn't meet the, the city standard of seventy-five degrees. And so this is the alternative three that's in the memo. This is the one where we're, we're not proposing to bring Taylor Street in, the location of West Taylor Street. As we've looked at this, we just feel like. It's just not a very good place to bring in a new public street intersection with the angle of Arthur Street, the. The issues that we just discussed on West Taylor Street. Um, we recognize the T S P calls for connectivity there, but with further engineering analysis. We find it's just not a very good location. So we feel like this is a much safer option. It still preserves adequate street capacity. There's opportunity for another street connection to the south if that's deemed necessary with future development. Um, so this is the alternative three that we feel is, is the. Best of the three alternatives in the, in our memo there. There was some discussion about, um, the connection and of Seventh Street and J R Meadows one. So this is to the northeast of our site. Where Seventh Street now intersects main. Um, in that case, we were able to align Seventh Street. With the north leg of that intersection at a perpendicular intersection, the center lines align. Um, made some changes to the geometry of the south leg of seventh to make that work, but it was, it was doable. Um, but on the right, you can see that's, that's just not the case here with Taylor Street. It's a, it's a different situation. With skew angles, we can't get the center lines to align. Um, it's just a different and more complicated circumstance than there was in. J R one there. So here we start to compare the future street plan from the T S P on the left to, um, the streets that have been approved as we've gone through. J R Meadows phases one, two and three. So this kind of illustrates what we feel is the appropriate use in the past of those provisions for flexibility that are specifically called out in the T S P. Where, um. Where the alignments.
What's that? Hand me the mouse, I'll get rid of that block up there. Oh.
Thanks. Sorry, we've got a window covering part of the screen here. So some, some, some key pieces to, to note here is just how some of the streets were aligned differently based on property lines. Cleveland Street was shifted south a bit as it abuts the school property. Um, that was just, just determined to be a more appropriate alignment for the street. But you'll note there about halfway up the screen, the removal of East Polk Street. So. As we looked at, at. At street intersection spacing and what was appropriate connectivity. The T S P actually calls for that Polk Street, but it was determined that that street really wasn't necessary to serve the neighborhood as it was developing. So that's, it's kind of an example of not just shifting alignments, but actually, um. Omitting a road segment in that case, which we feel is appropriate. And so this shows the future street plan and the T S P behind, um, the street system as it's developing there and just illustrates. How things have changed as appropriately as those sites have, have developed and been, been approved. So yeah, just, it just shows the, the flexibility that's been used in the past as the street plan has been implemented. So this shows, um, south of the site. As we mentioned, the, that, the ta- without the Taylor Street connection opposite West Taylor. That doesn't preclude another street intersection if that's deemed necessary in the future to serve the neighborhood. Based on the analysis we've done to date with J R Meadows, one, two, three, this, this subdivision. Um, looking at future growth on the highway and through the transportation system, all of our analysis shows these intersections will operate. Well within standard, low delays. So we feel that the way this neighborhood's developed, we don't really need an intersection at Taylor Street. There's just not enough sufficient traffic to really warrant that connection. But if in the future it's determined that another intersection would be beneficial to the neighborhood, that's still a possibility. So by approving an option now that doesn't stub a street on East Taylor, it doesn't preclude the ability to do that in the future. So this is actually the. The original subdivision layout in the subdivision application. Um, and it shows East Taylor Street extending straight from. From where it was approved in J R Meadows three on the east property line, extending straight to the west to, um. Where it stubs into the railroad right away. And here we'll, the next few slides will show how that connection could also be. A safe, um, street connection to the highway. So here's the first option of that. And then in our memo, we talk about and recommend that closure of West Taylor Street. For these scenarios where there's a connection from the east. Um, and that's just due to those site distance issues. Um, right now, a driver exiting West Taylor onto the highway has bad site distance. But as you add a fourth leg to that intersection, they have to deal with those, the poor site distance, but also. Um, they have to yield to other turning movements. It makes a more complex operation as a four-legged intersection. We feel that. Just exacerbate those safety issues. So we have been recommending the closure of West Taylor Street. Also the closure of Arthur as it comes in at a, is a really flat angle there. So this shows how Taylor Street could be connected to the highway. Um. At a perpendicular intersection that meets the design standards of the city and the design standards in the. ODOT's, uh, highway design manual. Site distance is good as it's on the outside of the corner. So we feel that is a, can, can be a safe intersection with the highway, meets design standards. And would provide that connection that is shown in the future street plan in the T S P. And we included this as kind of an option to that alternative where if West Taylor Street didn't want to be closed. There's an option to realign that. So we'd have a four-legged intersection. Um, with that realignment, it would clean up some of that vegetation on the inside of the corner and it could be made to be a safe. Uh, four-legged intersection. And just to be clear, these, these are options that could be implemented in the future. This subdivision doesn't make these connections, but this is just setting up what. Potential options in the future to facilitate that connection. So that's all, those are all, yeah, my slides. I wanted to walk through those layouts and make sure that was clear so we could look at the pictures, but. There's probably questions, we're happy to, to answer those.
If that's leaving the door open for me to say, if you have any questions or not, we will save those. Um, for just a little bit and we will let Mr. Hoyt finish out with any remainder of his presentation.
Uh, very briefly, I just want to summarize. We certainly understand the staff's position. There is a drawing for the future street plan that says that Taylor Street's supposed to be connected. We certainly understand the staff's interpretation of the word shall. Uh, we just believe that when a, uh, larger. Lens is applied to what has happened, that that has not been the interpretation that the city has applied. To the last three applications it's approved to the east and to apply that here seems to seg- uh, segregate this application and. Ask it to meet a standard that was not met in other subdivisions and in fact actually makes it more complicated for this subdivision to meet it. Because Taylor Street was relocated in a way that can't do it. And so we believe there's ample flexibility to solve the problem. And really, when you boil this down, the problem is safety. The. Only two alternatives that provide safe connections that meet city design standards is the straight extension of Taylor Street. Straight from where it intersects from J R Meadows three to the west or the elimination of the Taylor Street connection altogether. Uh, we are fine with either those alignments. We can work with some of the others, but we just honestly don't want to build something that A isn't safe. And B doesn't meet the city's own design standards. But if that's what the city and the staff require, we can work with it. We would prefer not to because we want to build a safe project. So we believe the best of those alternatives is the one that closes East Taylor Street. That doesn't result in the closure of other streets in order to create a safe intersection. It provides significant flexibility. There is the ability to provide an extension east-west to the south in the future. So we think when the safety factors are considered, particularly in light of all the flexibility that has been exercised by the city in the past. In applying the standard seventeen sixty-four thirty D. Um, we believe that there's ability to approve the project as proposed with the closure of East Taylor Street or the straight extension of East Taylor Street. And we believe that the information for those two designs is sufficient and is in the hands of the commission. And so the. If either of those two alignments are adopted, the record is ripe for decision tonight. So with that, we will say. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Hoyt. Um, we'll get to questions, um. In just a little bit, but I think we'll open for public testimony at this point. We'd like to invite. Um, any proponents, those in Zoom land or here present this evening. Who would like to speak as a proponent, uh, or in otherwise in support of the pending application, the S U B. Who would like to speak as a proponent uh or in otherwise in support of the pending application, the S U B twenty twenty-three dash zero two. We'll set a time limit of three minutes for uh any individual uh to kind of give their perspective. Is there anybody in Zoom land? If you could raise your hand or otherwise make yourself um known. You'd like to speak as a proponent for this application. If for some reason you're technically going slow, just let us know. We can circle back to you. This time, we'd also invite opponents for the pending application. Uh, if you can make yourself known in Zoom land. And seeing none and hearing none, uh if there are any neutral or undecided people who would just like to have something to say. In Zoom land. Do you have that? We do have one here in person. We will let you speak, sir. If you just. You are.
Thank you. I'm Joe Joseph Emerson. I live at seven twenty-nine South Second Street. And um, I have some serious questions about the a project. Not objecting to it because uh. I can see the use of built. The need for housing in the city of uh Carlton. I want to compliment uh. Uh. The planning commission on stuff that I've heard today. I think you're doing a good job. Uh. I do have uh. A que- question about what the state right away with this. And uh, that may have an impact on those trees that uh are. Are creating a problem because if the if the street is a hundred and twenty foot, like I believe it is. Those trees are well within the right away, so they can be uh removed, which would. Enhance the uh safety portion for access from the uh west on to forty-seven. Uh, the next question I have is uh, if there. If the commission, the planning commission decides to uh not connect that Taylor Street. Uh, I'm I'm wondering why uh. It it's designed so that worship uh. Wilson is uh going to be at one uh more of a major street by design. Uh, if. The subdivision does not uh connect a Taylor Street. Then uh I would think that the commission would ask the. The development to get an easement that will allow. Um, Wilson Street to be connected for fire access and everything else. Uh.
Is it to Arthur?
Uh, connecting to Arthur, yes. Um, thank you. And uh. That would uh put it on the subdivision uh to. Make application and get it through the railroad because I'm not sure the railroad road will allow that. And if that's just stubbed out there only to make the subdivision look good. That's. That's not what I as a city resident would want. I would want it to be connected through or have a solid potential and capability being up through. Uh, the next uh que- uh concern I have is Second Street. Uh, as I pointed out in my uh information I presented, there's very definite signs that. There's some sewer failing on uh Second Street. Due to satellite's right over a sewer sewer lateral and the sewer main. Uh. Uh, another uh uh problem is that whenever. The previous development that was part of this property, but whenever Bud sold it. Uh, he was asked to carry the street all the way through. At that time, as an inspector in a. For site development in Washington County and a property owner there. I asked them why they weren't putting it to city standards, and I was told to get off the property by. A city representative. And uh I didn't have any. Rights to uh be making comments. So with that said, the uh. Street. Second Street hasn't been handled appropriately in the past. So that makes me very concerned that it won't be handled appropriately now. But uh all of the designs that we've seen tonight. Shows that Second Street is going to be a a primary access. And therefore should be treated as a primary access and upgraded to public standards. Not saying that it should be, you know, just for God. And uh we're not saying to make it a highway. What we're asking as uh residents on the street. That if we're going to get impacted, we like it. They be. Appropriately addressed so that the street doesn't fail. Uh. An example of failing is uh, I believe uh we just uh did a repair. On uh. East Main Street due to sewer line failing. And uh, uh trucks can have a serious impact to sewer lines, water lines. And uh, just the asphalt of the street. Uh. And uh on. On the safety of the street. Uh, calculations plan, uh they show that the uh. Their safety plan goes clear to uh Oak Street, which is uh. That's that's showing me that they know the. Subdividing engineers understand that there is going to be a serious impact to that street. If they're making a safety plan on it. So therefore, they have referenced it, but ignored it because of the additional cost. They show that they're going to do some work on it. All we're asking is do all of the work on it. Do it appro- appropriately. And uh. I would like the. Here. Uh legitimate reasons I can pass on to my neighbors. Of. That is a. A correct summation from our point of view, or why it is not. An appropriate summation and why it should be left out of of the. Planning for this development.
Thank you very much, sir. Um. Is there, are there any other uh neutral, unopposed, undecided? Interested in talking at this point or presenting their comment? Hearing none and seeing none, we will shift on to our next phase, which is questions from the floor, from the planning commission directed through the chair. Um. I think it might be helpful. Um, to maybe first direct any supplemental questions after hearing everything to city staff, city attorney, or the city engineer. To give a little bit of context and then from there move forward with any questions of the applicant. Um. We'll just start with grace, uh the most graceful attendees, Commissioner Terrell.
Okay, so um, there was one. Comment from the applicant that said city design standards can't be met. Gordon, is that true? From your standpoint, can city design standards not be met?
At this point, the drawings that we see are aerials. Um, they're not in great detail. They're appropriate for the application.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I would. Assume that those could be adjusted and that angle which they are speaking about. It's possible that that could be made seventy-five degrees uh as far as um. Site distance. Uh, from the east side. It, we have plenty of site distance. Uh, it's the west side that doesn't meet standards. The east side, which connection of Taylor to the highway. Has. A lot of site distance, probably about seven hundred feet. Yeah, and stopping. Stopping site distance uh per Ash toe at thirty miles an hour is. Uh, about two hundred feet. There's some differences based on geometry, but. So that criteria could be made. We could meet and the angle potentially.
Mm-hmm.
Is is that something where um on the existing Ta- Taylor going. Toward forty-seven would could be precluded, like say, right turn only or something. Is that is that what the solution would be? If the sight lines or otherwise that that angle would not be sufficient from Taylor going towards forty-seven, you would just have some sort of. At least a sign saying no, no left turn or.
Well, from the east side, you're gonna have plenty of sight vision. The the issue on the sight vision is. On the existing street on the west side.
You're looking left.
Looking north and it.
Looking right.
It is. Bad.
Looking.
As as the applicant has noted.
Looking towards the direction of the turn.
So if you would drive here and go that way.
You're on the west side. Come up to the highway and look. To your left, which would be north, that site. Sight vision is really poor and is is dangerous as noted by. The applicant. From the east side. You have sight vision. You're on the outside of the curve. You can see both ways.
Thank you.
Okay, so and then um. I I do have some concern if you close off Taylor Street, that all of our emergency services are coming in through Second Street, which is a. It's, I think it's, it almost looks like it's a gravel road.
Yeah.
At some point or dirt.
It's poor-conditioned asphalt. It is asphalt, but it's obviously old and it's obviously. Alligator, um, emergency vehicles can come in through Third Street.
Uh-huh.
Or Seventh Street.
Where's seventh?
Yeah, come through J R one.
Oh, and go and turn up?
Yeah.
Okay, and so is that a comfortable, like, is that comfortable for, like, you feel like that's a comfortable transportation? Plan to have for emergency? Is that sufficient?
Uh, for fire, they they require two access. Uh, points if you're over thirty homes and. If J R three is constructed, they will have more than two.
Okay. Okay, um. And then, Ben, just from the city standpoint, they um, the applicant gave lots of testimony about. Our past approvals of J R two and three and those alignments. Can we talk about why? Why, how, what was the thinking behind that and how that is, um, how that might impact what they're saying about it, not us doing it on. Allowing flexibility in the past.
Uh, we did allow flexibility in the past. Um, if you look at J R one. Uh, the alignment showed that Seventh Street was going right down the property line. Which would align Seventh Street, North and South across Main Street, yeah. Uh, we. Said the most important part of that is to have the intersection aligned.
Mm-hmm.
And then it made sense to allow. Adjustment of Seventh Street to the east. Uh, so it's still there. It still meets the intent of. The T S P.
Sure.
Um. And that continued on through uh J R two and J R three. Uh, that alignment just continued. It does continue all the way through and continue, we can continue south. In J R three. Uh, Cleveland Street was shown to be right on the property line, and then again. Um, there's adjustment of that, moving it over.
Right.
Um, but it's still there. So those were some of the adjustments and flexibility that we uh used. There was. Some discussion about some of the east-west streets. Um, and how that would all lay out and I. If I recall right, and AKS can probably help me with this, but they provided. What they call the shadow plats. It showed how the streets would continue to connect and have that connectivity. Uh, to the east of Seventh Street, and that was considered. Uh, when those applications were. Submitted and approved.
Mm-hmm.
So there was uh. Flexibility used and uh the intent. Was maintained and the connection points to existing. Uh, city streets were maintained.
Let me add to that. I wasn't the planner with the city at the time that earlier uh subdivisions. And approved through the city here, but uh this is a reminder, each site has its own characteristics, its own. Um, uh, situation. One of the slides up there identified uh sensitive areas that may have been a part of the considerations, as Gordon mentioned there.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and that's generally the need for flexibility comes when you have something. Uh, topographic concerns, something uh that warrants consideration. Uh, a- as we've stated here, this is an important con- uh connection. Uh, the standard in D. Speaks specifically to uh the connection and to state and county roads. And so uh that that's the great difference here is that we see the opportunity through this project. To to make that connection feasible. Uh, and so that's, I just wanted to add. Uh, that that uh um point, I'm not sure as to what, you know, has there been good and bad advice from staff? To on evaluating all that type of thing, so, yeah, but, yeah, just all of that. Each each site has its own quasi judicial um application. Uh, I would assume that the codes are the same for the most part in the last of, what, ten years or so, but uh. I I just wanted to have that.
Well, it just, I mean, it just occurred, as I just look at this. Alignment, it seems like Cleveland Street kind of continues right over so it can seamlessly connect to Cleveland Street on the. Gosh, now I'm gonna have to think of the direction, the west side.
Those are conceptual. From the C T S B, so.
Oh, these are, oh, that's why, oh, those aren't the.
Conceptual.
Okay.
They're not actual.
That's not actually what happened. Okay. Okay.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, 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 I'm glad you did. I'm glad you did. Okay, um. So I think that's all I have for right now. So I'd like to say somebody else speak.
I I you raised a point um that I think the city attorney could. Uh, to address for us. If in the event that we have a denial here tonight, the next is the appellate procedure goes right to the C C, right? City council, they they're the next stage, and they're the ones who are gonna have you in executive session, and they can get privileged advice, correct?
Yes.
So. If we remain in a pickle, that's an understandable pickle. This is a a pickle jar that may not be able to be opened tonight, and we do deny. And this is appealed to the city council. Assuming that we vest this decision, this specific decision in the city council, everything else. In the subdivision application, we can otherwise approve and give our imprimatur to, but then. Deny the application, shift this to the city council, allow them to speak with you in executive session, get. Advice on what exposure live for liability wise for uh. An arbitrary capricious or otherwise inconsistent application of the T S P in J R one, two, three, they can make the final decision as to whether or not to approve this. If we otherwise give the city council the the our our stamp of approval on everything else except this. Would that be? A reasonable process?
When you say accept this, do you mean whether or not the subdivision meets criteria seventeen point six four?
Uh, yeah, it's essentially, we go through this process, acknowledge that it meets all the other requirements except for that which. We're dealing with here, this this street issue. It's denied. However, the city is in a position where the elected individuals get to make an override. Or a specific decision on this. They can have a conversation with you privately as to what expectations might be. As far as accountability for the city on a going forward basis.
Not one hundred percent honest, if I understand the question.
So we don't have, and we're not in an executive session right now, and but by the time this gets before the city council. You're gonna be able to be in a position to give them advice on whether or not these arguments and the reading in between, in between the line of the memo from S S J H. Is you got some liability here for inconsistent application.
Uh, okay. Uh, okay, uh, yes, I would have that opportunity.
Yeah, I I think ultimately giving that decision instead of pointed unelected beautiful people as we are, that might be a really good route to have some accountability and have some of these questions on Second Street pass on to uh elected individuals. Uh, I will digress. I'm Councilor Maya.
Would that not, would that not be one of, one of our options for um, and the options that relate out for us for approval? Would that not be something that?
It wasn't listed on the four options, but that that's kind of one to want to bring it to.
Well, as I read them, it seemed as it would be because if we were to approve an option, what, option two, it would be based on, they would have to come back and and on January eighth to provide the rest of the information, essentially that 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 the city was uncomfortable with or felt that that was missing. Yes, yeah, maybe some clarification.
Yeah, uh, the staff um is able to support the alignment of uh two there. Um, and as Gordon said, it's slightly off, given an aerial photograph there, but it's still workable within the uh, the degree of angle there, but uh uh, but yeah, we we have said stated for the record that we are able to su- uh support the the alignment that that's shown. There's still a lack of of detail. Uh, we have a role uh where we have to review uh the the plan to uh how many lots and configuration and all of that sort of thing. So they need to kind of show us how many lots they're proposing. Is there a new tract of land? Uh, so uh, we would be able to uh respond accordingly and say the commission, yes, it hopefully say, yes, this meets all of the the standards. Uh, and uh, we would adjust the conditions that you have in the memo accordingly. If if need be, we would say, okay, oh, let's uh adjust a little bit here and there, but um, yeah, for that reason, at this time, we're not able to support uh uh alignment number, number two, have high hopes that it that that uh, there would be a lotting pattern in there that we could.
So so here's where I'm at. The the I I feel like the consultant um, or the applicant has given a pretty thorough, I think, I think they've done a really great job at providing a a good argument for us to consider. Um, I also don't feel compelled to go against staff recommendation um that more information is required. Um, or to be labeled the process by pushing this decision to city council um, instead of us being provided all the information that we've been given tonight. Um, and a previous meeting or previous opportunity, I I think we have all the information that we need to support option two um, at this stage, that's where I'm at.
And that's this this one here. Alignment two, we're going with option two or alignment two.
Right, with the provisions that the city has laid out um, in in terms of the additional information that they need to continue.
Yeah. Having driven, I I guess that could be the only expert to contact is I've driven that so many times. It's anecdotal, but one in ten people is going the speed limit there, so. I I just think it's a terribly unsafe area, so I can understand the the applicant's perspective. I see that Commissioner Bande has has some input and I will give him the floor.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I find that this is probably one of the least refined proposals I've seen uh in my time as commissioner. I'm not happy with many things that should be addressed in this and I I am very, 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 very aligned with poor citizens that live on Second Street to the north of this development. And I believe this de- development has no right of existing without explicit changes and improvement to the north part of Second Street that is outside the development. Secondly, I know that paths of Highway forty seven right there where all this stuff is being hashed about back and forth. None of it is very safe now, let alone safe with the addition of something going through straight to Highway forty seven. In addition to that, the traffic that will occur along poor Polk Street, which happens to be about three blocks north of where I live, would be horrible. And it is also the feeder to our elementary school. And all of this is going to crush that traffic worse than ever. And I see no reason why we should get hand tied and tied into having to do something just because it quote unquote meets everything when in fact it's not good for the area around there, nor the nor for the city of Carlton, in my opinion. Thank you, Chair. I re- I will yield now.
I have a response to Councilor Bande.
May I respond first, please? It is the obligation of the planning commission to approve an application that meets all of the applicable criteria. Just being that to be clear.
Um, yeah, and just if I if I could respond to that, um, I I tend to prefer, I think, option three, um, just based on the safety issue in itself and my concerns with putting a stub out into Highway forty seven. I also often come uh from Arthur Street onto Highway forty seven, merge into that. And even even with the uh expanded sight view, it does make it a difficult intersection and it concerns me and um great detail that we would, you know, be adding as the applicant had stated, you know, for a a four-way intersection, I forget, a four-way connection. And however, and with going with option three, it does seem like it puts unfair, an unfair obligation on Polk Street, which is a very narrow roadway and a connector to the school, so that does concern me without sidewalks on both sides. Um, as also, you know, an unfair burden on Second Street as well with going with option three. So, you know, I'm I don't, I don't know how to, uh, you know, navigate, reconcile those two issues because on one side, I feel like option three provides the community and the connection between the bike path um, and 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 the new neighborhood seems like a very smart choice, a very well thought out choice. Um, and preserving uh the trail, potential trail that's along uh the old railroad there. Um, I'd love to hear your thoughts on that interview.
Uh, I I. I agree with the conundrum. I I lean towards option three if it's, if city attorney says it's within our authority to do that. Um, I I'm very sensitive to South Second, uh, and this is where the extent of the authority as the chair kind of ends, but what I'd love to see is I'd love the applicant to say, you know what? We'll just make this an issue. We'll clean up all the way to Polk. They don't have a responsibility beyond that, but the applicant says we're gonna be doing all this work, we'll just extend second and we'll just do the work for the hundred and twenty feet additional. Yeah, that'd be great, but that's not the way my role works. Um, so I yeah, I I like, I I don't mean to sound like we're shirking it, but I like shifting these kind of decisions that balance important interests like that of Mr. Emerson and the residents on Second against our other, our other um requirements. Right now, staff is telling us that as a planning commission, when we don't have when we're getting advice saying all of the cr- criteria are not met, we've got the authority to say no. But I think we balance that against all of the community needs that you guys, we, I are exposed to. Um, and if necessary, we can shunt it off to the elected representatives, but um, Susie?
Yeah, so I have a couple of con- comments. Um, I think the bike paths from the, like, is it option three is the one that they want with no connection? Yeah, I think that's silly. Um, because you'll have bike lanes on Wilson Street and cyclists like to go places. They like to use it for transportation, which is what the idea we have in our transportation system plan. It's not recreational. It's um actually to use for transportation and there will be, if if East Wilson Street connects to the Spring Water, not, it's not the Spring Water Quarter, the railroad. Great, if that ever becomes a thing, then that's sufficient bicycle access, as would Taylor Street connecting to that same stub there. I mean, both of those will connect to, so the bicycle lane, I I don't, I mean, nice idea, but I just think it's kind of silly. Um, the um my concern is um, that these are aspirational, these connections. So as we think about how traffic is impacted, really, we can't talk about like fire engines driving down East Wilson Street from the, from the trail. And we can't talk about fire engines driving down Taylor Street from the highway, because in fact, that connection doesn't exist. So we are shunting the 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 fire and safety onto Second Street, which is a it's not a real street, really. I mean, I guess it is, but not a good street. And um and then all of it, all the traffic through, wow, I guess Third Street. Um.
Well, it would be Pol- Polk and Third or.
Polk and Third, yeah, they could drive down Polk and come in through Second or Third and get up there.
Or Third or Seventh, depends on where they're coming from.
So, um, yeah. I guess I'd like to know from the applicant why you're reluctant to do other than your safety reasons. If if our staff is saying, well, we can overcome these connections for option three, why you would be reluctant to do that? Why is it your preference for option three if we can do it with a connection to Taylor Street? Is that okay to ask the applicant now? Was that question clear? I was sort of thinking out loud.
I I didn't fully understand it because we're proposing option three because all of the other connections either require closure of other streets to make them safe or we can't um, all due respect, make them meet the city's own design standards. Uh, we did propose the extension of Taylor Street straight across the subdivision as part of the initial application. That remains a viable alternative. We don't think that's the best connection for the city, but it does provide the Taylor Street connection to the western boundary uh, at the same point that it comes out of J R Meadows Three. Uh, does that address your question?
So I think I'm mixing up the options. This is option three.
That's option three.
And this little J one is a, is that the little, the J one? Okay.
Yeah, we we refer to that one as the Second Street J connection.
Yeah, that sounds right. The Second Street J connection. So Gordon, how do you feel, Gordon? Um, and Mr. White, how do you feel about the Second Street J connection? Do you feel like that meets safety standards?
One of the issues that we have right now is they they have brought up some potential issues such as queuing, but we don't have any data for that, so we don't know if that's an actual issue.
Right, okay, because there's no traffic report about that.
No, they brought it up as a potential issue and it is a potential issue, but they haven't run the uh, models to show whether it is or not. The angle, we might be able to adjust with uh specific design. We have the site distance. Uh, I would say that that general area, uh, because of the other uh, streets, Arthur and the highway and uh, the west side of Taylor is is a problematic area in general. Um, but that's not, we're not making that connection right now and we're not doing that actual design right now.
Okay, and so as I understand it, if staff had to approve one of these, they would approve option one with more information provided. Was that option two?
Option two.
The J one. Yeah, okay.
Forgive what I believe is extreme ignorance on my part. Why is Wilson being stubbed and why is Taylor the connection to forty seven not being stubbed when they both have to cross over that easement?
They're all, both would be stubbed.
They both would be stubbed. So we're really talking about academics.
Right.
Practically speaking, no matter what, excuse me, no matter what, the the real impact to the community that's from this is gonna be on second. Any way we slice this potato, it's it's second has the issue, so. Yeah, uh, thanks first for clarifying what I thought was my ignorance, but it wasn't, it's only half ignorance.
For future connections.
So when, when is it even postulated that those would ever come into effect? We talking five, ten years or there's truly a TBD to it and we we would never know?
We don't know. We, you know, they're not going to be done because of development, because it's not property that's developable. It would be the city talking to the property owner, which in that case, I believe is the county at this point. Um, and there would have to be some agreement and the city would be more than likely the ones that would make that connection. So, I'm wise, I don't have a.
There is the the T S P update uh that you're still working on the the scope with the contract, the but there's been a selection of a uh a firm for that purpose. Uh, and this type of thing is looking at all kinds of alternatives uh along that that area. Um, approving option three does not guarantee that one street is closed over another. There is no connections that are proposed under any option. I'll make sure that that commission's well aware of that because there's a little bit of of confusion there and and um, uh, so you don't, you don't get any, but you you get the option of of option three does not provide the option of making that connection in the future. It can be evaluated as part of the T S P update, this whole intersection with many, there's a myriad of intersection options from roundabouts and all kinds of things. You've seen a, seen a lot of uh, things that that can be. Uh, so I I just wanna make sure that the commission's aware of that, that we can take a harder look at this in a in a larger uh context as well through the T S P amendment process.
So with option two, we we couldn't approve that without further information anyway, because we need to know where the lots are.
Yeah, staff staff, just as a function of being staff, we have to uh take a look to see if the lotting pattern is is such that uh uh meets standards. Fortunately for the for the zone, the M X zone has a lot of of flexibility to it. There's no minimum lot size. Uh, so I mean, that's, there are some things that are are running in favor here, this the zoning itself. Uh, but we need to know, there is a a portion of lots that need to be um, uh, attached versus detached, so we need to understanding of where that's located. Um, I don't think it's going to be too difficult for the applicant to achieve that if uh if the commission prefers again that that option.
And and Second Street and Taylor Street, they're both local streets, so they're fairly narrow anyway. They're not like, it's, and Wilson is is the huge wide forty-six foot wide street because it's a collector's, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're local.
Mm-hmm, okay. So these are local streets, so these would be slower moving supposedly, kind of like the little curb. I mean, that slows traffic a bit as it approaches the intersection. Um, if and ever there was an intersection. And and what about Second Street? There's, there's nothing um in this application that could make Second Street, like, uh, can the infrastructure on Second Street support this subdivision? Like, I mean, are are sewer lines gonna burst on Second Street?
Well, uh, typically sewer lines don't burst because of traffic. They burst or break or fall apart because the pipe is falling apart. Uh, for instance, the break that just happened on Main Street, that was not because of traffic. It's because you had a seventy-year-old steel pipe that was corroding. Um, and we've had other instances where gravity lines have collapsed. It's not because of the traffic, it's because it's clay pipe that disintegrated. I don't know the depth of the sewer on Second Street, so you know, if it was only a couple of feet deep, okay, maybe it's an issue. Uh, that's something that can be looked at. Uh, that's something that can be looked at. But I do know that the asphalt is old and in poor condition. But that's, could be said of many streets in town.
Most.
Yeah.
As far as timing, because this is a different, different development entirely from J R Three, and so we don't know. Whether or not these guys have their proverbial stuff together sooner, faster than the others and. Like, would there be any, as a condition of approval, if no matter what we do, can we have limitation on construction traffic? On Second to address some of those concerns? Is that, is that a rightful condition that we can put as part of this? Because the, the local everyday traffic, I, I would distinguish from. Dozers and the big guys coming in to do the site work.
Well, one of the conditions is that J R Three be built first, so those roads would be put in place and certainly. Uh. You know, it, it would be a concern if, if construction vehicles went down Second Street and they. They destroyed the street. I mean, that would be something that we would certainly bring up as part of. Uh. Approval. And I don't know if we can put that as a condition of approval or not, Scott, you can maybe. Address that.
What would be in support if we could?
I, I think it's not the only access that the applicant would, would have, um, and uh. Yeah, just, just sort of thinking out loud here, uh, they would probably have to get some construction uh, traffic there as they are. Uh, they are putting some improvement in there, so there's got to be for that, that purpose of improving that, that section, they would need to be in there. Um. And I, but I'm, I'm thinking that we could uh, craft a condition, maybe that discourages. Um, I, I'm kind of wondering if that may be a temporary, I have seen conditions structured such that. A temporary sign shall be in place for the period during construction of Second Street placed at Polk or something like that.
Wait, a, a sign?
Uh, or some, something that, well, I'm, I'm, I don't know, you know, you have to tell the uh, the contractors uh, that. Hey, this is not, um, so if you were to structure a condition, how are you, how are you executing that? It's, it's more the, the, the question. Um, uh, staff could, you know, talk to the applicant and through a. Construction meeting maybe suggests that, hey, don't, don't utilize it or something like that, there's sort of administrative things that, that we can do. Uh, but if you're looking at a condition, uh, you know, what, what that might entail to discourage traffic, I don't know, some sort of sign, some. Temporary signage or such. It's the only thing I can think of.
Oh, to add that signage. Oh, got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, on the other hand, you don't want. The bulldozers, well, are not bulldozers, but you don't want like mega. Driving past the school either, as children are trying to cross the street and there's. Right? That seems like, and, and if it comes all the way, well, anyway, that's just speculation. Yeah, they're gonna, yeah, nobody's gonna like the bulldozers driving by or whatever, but.
Temporary.
Uh, with respect to the applicant, um, what is the comfort level with? Uh, establishing a very firm set of circumstances that uh, would preclude. Major heavy traffic on Second, so we can protect that street while it remains in its less than optimal condition.
Well, um, two things. One, as long as we have another way in, and my concern would be that Second Street is more distant from the elementary school. If the access is to come, if J R Meadows Three is built first, I don't think there's any issue with directing traffic down Seventh. And in through J R Meadows Three. Uh, we can, you know, arrange that with suppliers and the rest. Uh, and post signs that construction access is to go different directions. I, I don't see that being an issue. Uh, Mike, the applicant has also asked me to indicate that. There's been a lot of discussion of what we've called the Second Street J Connection. Uh, if that's something that the commission is interested in, that is something that the applicant believes to be workable. Uh, and is fine providing the additional detail that staff is looking for, for that connection. Uh, our preference frankly would be that the. Uh, a decision be issued approving the Second Street J Connection, subject to sufficient information being provided to staff. If the commission and staff are uncomfortable with that, we're fine coming back and providing the information before the twenty-sixth of December. And coming back for the January hearing for a final approval of that, that form of connection. The other two, we still believe are more safe. Uh, we still believe they're preferable, but if that is what the commission and the city prefer, that is workable for the applicant.
I, I just think the whole idea of stubbing to a, a bridge, it's a bridge to nowhere, it's a stub to nowhere, that's frustrating long term. Um, and I, I still think option three presents a little bit more of a safe um, approach. To there, but um, I think.
I mean, we certainly agree, but we're trying, we're trying to be flexible and work with the city, because we want to make your city better.
Mr. White, what are your thoughts on? Is this something that you think you can give us a little bit more nuanced or? Uh, strategic guidance on option two versus three uh, by January eight? Well, yeah. Kind of, you know, sensing what, uh, it, it's really what. Uh, the commission makes the decision, staff is here to, to provide you with what the, the standards are. And uh, yeah, the, the, the commission weighs it, uh, just as, you know, a judge would review it and evaluate. Uh, and uh, uh, we, we've looked at the standard. We, we see it's feasible to, uh, it's really kind of coming down to this, uh, this, this one standard entity. Uh, and uh, we, we see the importance of, of having, even though the stub might be there. For many years, um, we're looking at exactly that, the long term. Of the city to ensure we have options for our citizens that have yet to be here. Uh, so we have to sort of consider the broader perspective, not just this one project. But um, what more projects to come in the future, so, so we believe that that is a safety element in itself that deserves consideration. And so we are, are recommending that the commission. Uh, uh, you know, give some, uh, I don't know, I. Uh, you know, preference to option two. Uh, but uh, if the commission feels strongly about option three and would like to make a, a decision this evening. Uh, you would probably have to, to make a, a motion that says, uh, hey, we, we uh, have listened to also a, a different side here. What the applicant has, has provided. Uh, and uh, direct staff to prepare findings uh, in response to the applicant's uh, testimony. And uh, and we have conditions of approval that are reflective of. Of option three, again, should the planning commission choose to go that route?
I, um. I actually see value in, in the J continuation, even though it is a stub. Because as I've envisioned, perhaps someday, twenty years from now. There may be a pedestrian path there, and then that, there's another connection from that neighborhood to get to the pedestrian path. Also, even just a, a rough path across there allows pedestrians and, and cyclists to walk their bike across the spring, the. Railroad thing and then connect over to Taylor Street and get to the other side of town. I think there's real value in making sure our town has the potential to be connected east-west. And Anthony, I see, like, I see the um, option three, and I see that attraction, because it kind of feels neighborhood-y. Right? Kind of mix, fits that mixed MX zone feel for like a neighborhood. But I, I, I guess I come down on the side of staff for this one, that. I do feel like the potential for connection is, is super important. Especially that east-west connection, that's not real strong as it is. Right now, it's not that strong. Because of that corridor. I guess because of the railroad grade.
I'm sort of dealing with that, that, that same conundrum, however, looking at the current transportation plan, and although. We, we understand or we heard tonight that it, it will soon, it's, it's possible that it'll still be modified. There, there was a provision for that southern driveway portion that was provided on there, and. That seems to be appropriate, appropriately placed to me for a connection with Highway forty-seven. In a way that would allow users from either side, um, if that road were to be. Put there for appropriate visibility and safety, and. I, I, you know, I'm, I'm tired, uh. I'm sort of inclined to go with option three or uh, dependent on uh, the applicant. Adhering to all of the uh. Um, provisions that staff had laid out in their report. And it does seem to me like that it's been an appropriate use of the provision for flexibility and that we've done that. And I, and I really think they've made a good argument for that, um, I, I tend to agree that we do not need an intersection at East Taylor Street. And. Yeah, so that's where I'm at, so it's all you.
Mr. City Attorney, once again, your microphone requests that you tell us what happens in the event that we have a two-two. Is there a deference to an approval or deference to a rejection? How's that procedure enforced tonight?
I honestly do not have the answer to that. Because. I don't.
I believe it's in the positive that, that you have to my, my recollection, I, I think it may, it might be in Robert. If it's not stated in, this commission has adopted Robert, Robert's rules, and I think it may be in Robert's rules. If it's not in the. In the development code, I do have bylaws too, we could check uh, for that. I think that'd be good. I'm not good at predicting the future, but sometimes I am.
Yeah, I believe it has to be in, in the positive as opposed to.
It's the way it works for the Supreme Court, usually affirms the lower court, so we'll just trust them.
So.
Ending final ruling.
You could convince me, Anthony. Convince me if that, that little skinny bike path that they're proposing, if that becomes a robust pedestrian. Thing, not just a skinny fence line between two houses that are squashed in there. So it would need to actually be a legitimate, that would need to be described, and um, actually, it would have to be, I would. We, we'd need to see something nice that would be inviting for pedestrians.
Mr. White.
Feel like a bike lane that's inviting serves a purpose of connectivity, and if there's another street, that would be okay.
Mr. Hoyt, my protractor and compass were left at home this evening. Would you be able to tell me the width of that proposed, um? We'll call it a, a bike thoroughfare?
Uh, well, I, I don't have that, but I do have a text from the applicant that says pretty bike path sold. So.
No, I need, I need specific, I need specific dimensions.
Ten feet's pretty.
Feet. And what are the accommodations for pedestrians on that ten feet? So how does, how do the bicycles and pedestrians circulate safely on that ten feet of pavement?
Uh, well, my, my client is indicating that there's no objection to widening the bike path. Um, and in terms of pedestrian or bike circulation, I, I, I don't really definitively have an answer for you. Uh, given the length of it, and I'm not sure. How much conflict there would be, uh, but I understand the concern and. I'm not enough of an engineer. Um, I'm being told that. Ten to twelve feet is pretty standard for trails and pathways, um. And they will do both a bike and pedestrian um, striping. So I, 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 but I don't have specific details for you at this moment.
Striping, and um, what about landscaping? I want it to look nice. I don't want it to be an afterthought.
Yes to talk.
Mr. Bandi, while, while we are.
Oh, it's, it's like you love, you, you know, I guess you like to hear each other a ton, but I've had my hand up for a while, and I'd like to say.
Sorry.
Next, next time you just gotta poke it, dealing with little icons and big heads.
Yeah, I'm in Southern California, so that's why I'm not there. Um, okay. I. Have to go. With the chair's original idea, and let's send this off to the city council. And let them hang it out, because I'm sorry, there is nothing here that propels me to say yes. And there is quite a bit that propels me to say no, but I'm getting from you guys that you're about to say yes. I would prefer. To take this to the council and let them make that decision. Because I'm sorry, this, this. Development does not. Meet. My acceptable. Level of. Approval, and I, I just can't do it. I'm, I'm, I'm in negative boat, you know it, so there you go.
We appreciate it very much, Mr. Bandi, uh, your position is thoughtful, and certainly in the best interest of the community, so thank you. Um, Susie, did you have supplement?
Um, no, Jim, I hear you. I absolutely hear what you're saying. Um, and, and I were always stuck coming back to if they meet criteria. And so that's, that's kind of where I am. Um. I wish I could say that they don't, or that staff could say that they don't, um. I, but I, I have to do the legal thing, I guess is what I'm saying.
Yeah, but Suzie, the staff is also not really saying. It is, they're like vacillating, they aren't even directly saying. This works, this is acceptable, they're saying, yeah, we kind of favor, that is not approval. That is not a positive, strong commitment to a plan. This plan has flaws up the wazoo. And they know it, and, but they don't want to look like they're going to defeat it, so. I'm saying, no, and I'm saying, let it go forward in the city council, let it hash it out again. Let the proponents and the people who want this, this development to occur. The, the, the submittee, come before the council and sell it to them, because they're not selling it to me. That's it.
Mm-hmm. Um, staff, is there something that you would say that would be like, yes, this absolutely needs it, if we do this, it absolutely needs every single thing?
Like, well, we, we've made it clear to the record, um. Criteria D is not met with the applicant's uh, option three. Uh, so we, we are unable to support that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just the way that it, it reads, uh, we have uh, made it clear that that uh. Provision is clear and objective, uh, has uh, legally defensible, we, we. Um, and so uh, we're, we're unable to, just to support it from a staff recommendation of option three. And once again, with option two, uh, that does not conflict. With, with standard, uh, it's that standard D, uh, but uh, it's just lacking information. Uh, sufficient for us to say, yes, uh, it meets all the other standards, uh. Lotting pattern, number of lots, again, that would be attached or detached, we just don't, just don't know how that lays out.
So they would, so. Option two, they just need more information.
Need more information, uh, it would be a matter of a continuance, preferably requested by the applicant, and uh. Uh, it would be back on the commission's agenda for January eighth. Uh, provided the applicant is, is able to quickly turn things around, so we can get the commission, uh, that information.
Anthony, are you comfortable? I mean, I, I, I hear Jim's statement that, you know, if, if there is something that meets it, then, then we really are legally obligated, but. If, if the other one, if they say, no, it just doesn't meet.
Yeah.
Then we have to reject it, regardless of whether we like it or not.
Just because staff is saying that criteria or met or not met does not mean the planning commission has to adopt that as their finding. So the planning commission could find that criteria D is met. Or adopt Mr. Hoyt's argument, I'm not recommending that we adopt this argument, but that it is not a clear and objective standard because of. The eight pages that he.
His precedent and other.
Just because staff opinion or thing does not mean that's what the planning commission has to. Adopt like.
This is also in our motion options to, motion option C is to approve based on the additional supplemental findings of the commission. Subject to conditions of approval which are listed above, and there's a lot of them. And based on that, I would feel comfortable approving option three.
No. Um. We're dealing with the roadway, we've already talked about some other options with respect to. Neighborly respect uh, for those on second. Uh, I think, um, maybe the way to s- s- thread the needle here. Is to move for a continuance to allow us to have one more month, gives the applicant the opportunity to supplement. Documentation that would be supportive of, they're less than optimal, but they're provided J hookup. So we revisit that, the staff gets the appropriate. Lines and information that you need, so you can give us full, hey, this one I can't get behind on C, but this one as presented.
Hey, this one I can't get behind on C, but this one as presented option two meets all the requirements and we we'd be fully in the green there. I think we're we're given the option to balance a lot of interests here. And my suggestion before was if we denied it and it went to the city council, then they would have the secondary option to have. The thirty thousand foot view of the community um that we at least have as a first pass. So I think that that kind of meets in the middle, as much as I don't want to kick the can down, if we have one month. Um it gives a little bit more time for the applicants and um to to provide the information. Gives us a little bit more time to digest, I thought, I I'm really, I'm personally fine the information about the deviations. Uh in J R one, two, three. As as necessarily, if they're not precedential, it just kind of demonstrates how we're flexible and big picture. And we'd we'd have the ability to do three if that's where we all land, but we don't have to do it tonight, we've got time.
I I, yeah, I would, I'm I agree, I would like more information about option two. I I would just like to see what if they can figure out how to meet that and then we can compare.
Anthony, I'll get I I'll get behind that idea, okay?
So I don't think I can formally move, so would you move to continue? I'm I'm sorry, Mark, I just blended in there.
Head, sir. No, 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 no worries. You guys have got a lot of moving pictures and and uh uh no problem. Just two quick comments, one, my client is comfortable with in the option three. Committing to providing a landscape plan and and a up to fifteen foot wide path that has landscaping on both sides. Landscape plan to be provided to uh on both sides to be provided to and reviewed by staff. Uh so in terms of that connection being something meaningful and pretty, uh the applicant is happy to make that happen. Uh and then in terms of staff's comment, I really do feel like I need to address it, the concept that. A clear and objective standard is one that has not been applied clearly and objectively is incoherent. And you know, I the I think there's some astuteness in the concept of talking about advice in. Um executive session regarding the city's exposure, should it choose to apply a standard as clear and objective now? That has not been previously applied as clear and objective. I I don't, I respect staff's position, I certainly understand that, I know the word shall, and I've argued the word shall is mandatory, and it is. But in this instance, it has not been applied that way previously, and to contend that it is. When it has not been applied that way, I believe um is inconsistent with what the commission has done. And I think it's inconsistent with the way the community's developed, so I I think that needs consideration in light of the comment. Um and I think that the city attorney's comment that the planning commission can reach the conclusion. That that standard is satisfied deserves consideration as well, because we firmly believe it is and we firmly believe that. The previous approvals demonstrate that there's a the required level of flexibility to make that finding.
Thank you, Mister Hoyt. Um as I was suggesting to Commissioner Amai before, I think this would be ripe for a. Uh continuance, everybody's happier after Christmas, um and I would hope that persists here. You wouldn't mind making a motion just to continue.
Before any motion is made, I just, I would like to clarify, so I understand what is the commission requesting that additional information be provided? With the J connection.
Yes.
With the J connection with respect to the, what are the neighborly activities or preclusions that are going to be committed to by the applicant? With respect to Second Street, which applies in any option, how are they going to avoid as much impact to Second Street? With respect to large and commercial vehicles during construction as possible and the. Let the landscaped uh beautiful bike zone. I think those three things.
Well, the J option and the landscape bike path.
Yeah.
In that piece.
There there's there are two different options.
Yeah, option three.
So I'm asking for a date on both.
Right.
For us to consider.
Yes.
So three with three could still be an option for January eighth and it's going to be contextualized by what does that look like? From a connection point uh for pedestrians and bikes, and then we're asking for J Street so that staff can be more confident in. Giving us a proposal for acceptance uh that we've met all the criteria, um so that's like a can either or option here.
I don't believe we have any objection to providing a concept conceptual plan. And we we want to work with the commission, we want to uh. You know, give you the information you need to make decisions, so I, you know, the level of detail we'll have to figure out with staff, but the conceptual plan, I don't believe is a problem.
Conceptual.
Uh yeah, uh I mean, we're we're stuck with looking at if there is a a standard to that effect. If the applicant voluntarily does something beyond the standard, that is, that is their their choice, but yeah, the city attorney is correct. There is landscaping that, uh there's another application that has required a future date, a a. Site design review application that's mentioned in the the staff report and certainly in the conditions as well. It would apply only though to the um. Uh the multi uh the the attached uh portion of of this this area here. Certainly, there's conditions that call for uh street trees, uh long streets. Um but I don't think we have much with respect to that option three there, if it's landscaped. Uh I think it's about five feet or something right now that's shown there for a pathway, so. Uh it would be voluntarily what the applicant um would would provide uh the commission in that event.
Understood.
Was that clear as mud for you, Mister Hoyt? As to the three topics we were looking for information on prior to our next uh account.
As I understand it, lot layouts and the information identified in the staff report for the J configuration that was not previously provided, we agree it was not. The layout for uh proposed layout for the access in the option three, the pedestrian access. And a plan for construction vehicle management to channel that traffic away from Second Street.
Yes.
Sounds about right to me, sir.
Yeah.
We got that part.
So with that, uh so with that, um I will make a motion to continue the hearing to the January eighth Planning Commission meeting. Um observing the hundred and twenty day period for issuing a final written decision, which includes notice and appeal hearing time before council.
My second.
That's the first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Matter passes unanimously with the net abstaining. Thank you to the applicant, appreciate the thoughtful uh approach and we'll look forward to seeing you again in one month. Um this matter will be continued until January eighth.
Sticky wicked.
Yeah, sometimes you've got to try to thread the needle. Um so with that, uh any commissioner comments on any other matters? Personal, professional, psychological, metaphysical or otherwise? Okay, uh with that, we welcome a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second, all in favor, wave goodbye, we miss you, we love you, have a wonderful new season, everybody, thank you.
Thanks, Jim.